Good morning. It is eight thirty, Tuesday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome to the Brookings County Commission meeting. Please stand and we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any additions or corrections?
Onto the exec session, I do need to add SDCL one twenty five two six for a security discussion.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item four on the agenda is invitation for citizen scheduled time on the commission agenda for item not listed. There is a five minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. Nobody signed in this morning, so we'll move on to item number five is consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and the human services report. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any comments or additions or corrections? Hearing uncalled, roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six on the agenda is routine business is approval of the claims. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any comments?
There was one claim that was removed. I handed out a new front page register for the weed department. Bill to Van Dee Supply for Chemical was removed and will be resubmitted at a later date.
Anything else? Hearing none, call roll.
Post.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. Marty, you want to start today?
Morning.
Morning.
First of all, just a quick summary of detention center. We've got a total of forty seven inmates. Nineteen inmates are Brookings County inmates being held for either sentences through the court or waiting for trial. At the present time, we have sixteen U.S. Marshal, Marshal inmates. Twenty-four seven, it continues always to stay busy. There's a hundred and four participants in that, in that area, too. Hobo Day was lots of people, but didn't have a lot of issues at the jail. We, we had staff. There was less people arrested this year than last year, and, and so I think that was, that was good. The city police stayed busy with disturbance calls. Dave Beitler was out roaming around Friday night, and I came out later, and there was lots of people, but actually it was, it was pretty good. Lots of, lots of traffic and people, but, so that went out, did pretty good for, for Hobo Day. That's one of the calmer ones that, that I can remember, and I probably, there's been a lot of Hobo Days in my life, anyway. Another thing is that the department has been really busy this last weekend. Accidents, the, the milk truck accident in, in the Beta. I know Commissioner Vanderwall and Jensen, when we were at the nine one one meeting, there was a concern on wrecker service, you know, in the, the fire department there that had, you know, wait and so forth. Well, I said, you know, that could happen anytime, and about the next day it did, is that at the tanker one, we had to wait for a wrecker to come out of Sioux Falls. So it was over two hours for that wrecker to get there. The Bruce Fire Department stayed on scene anywhere from four to six hours, along with my staff. Dave came out, relieved the deputy, so someone was there. And so it just, that's just the way it is, where we got an issue with wrecker service for the area, so there's going to be wait, down periods, which pushes a strain on law enforcement, because we need to stay there. If the one that he was concerned about that day, that was off the road, and then we went back, my office went back after the fact and then did blocking of traffic, so they could get that out of the ditch, the one that he was talking about that day. So, I mean, when, when you got debris and so forth on the road, someone's got to stay around, of course, so. some time there, too, for, for things to, to get taken care of, and so the guys have been really busy. Now, at that intersection, I've had, Dave's had some people come in and talk to him. I've had people come in to talk to me about that intersection. And so I did call the highway shop yesterday and asked if they had any twirlies, and the twirlies are the things you put on the top of the stop signs. We did that a couple of years ago and put them on four-way stop signs and stuff. They had a couple, so I asked them if they would go and put two twirlies out there, and they, and which they did. My suggestion is, is that we need to think, rethink about putting bumpers, bumper bumps, you know, we got them on, we got them on the east side, let's, let's think about putting them on the, the other side. Even though, even though that this guy that ran the stop sign knew that stop sign was there, he just, it just, it just happened. So those bumpers can maybe hopefully remind you, hey, there's a stop sign up there. I also suggest that we probably put a, the, the solar stop sign there. Price, I priced them quickly, they're around seventeen hundred dollars, and you can, you can get cheaper ones, but you know, sometimes the cheaper ones is, will they last? So I guess I'd like to request that we, we spend some money and put a, put a solar stop sign at that intersection. I'd like to do that sooner than later. I'm willing to take it out of my budget at this time, and if I'm short at the end, we can compensate it, if, if we can do that without being on the agenda.
Marty, on the stop ahead sign, you think there need to be one there also?
What's that?
A flasher on the stop ahead sign also?
Well, that probably won't hurt.
That's what the state kind of did on, over by White, but the rumble strips was reviewed before.
I know we had some issues with, I remember I suggested that before, and I, we got kind of beat up on that from the residents, but now the residents that live in over there says it's time, maybe, we hear the ones on the other side, and we might as well hear those, too.
I had, I had a conversation with the residents there yesterday, too, and they suggested probably the same thing. I know there's an application at the rumble strips, the, however they put them in, they're not as loud as they used to be. I did talk to the highway superintendent, and he will be looking into that this next, when he gets back from his conference, so. But on the flashing stop sign and everything, if...
I'm in favor of that, Marty.
I think we should.
Is it okay?
Sheriff, have you talked to the, since the other side from the eastbound, westbound is, is state highway, have you?
Well, now that we're putting the, that you're gonna, yes, I will. I did talk to him yesterday about the twirlies.
Okay.
And, 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 because you, normally you got to go through a lot of steps.
Yeah.
And the local guy said, fine, for the twirlies. But now with the solar, yes, I will work on the other side.
Just let him know that we're doing it, so they should probably...
And we did research, Dave gave, got me some statistics, too, on, on accidents for the month that we've dealt with, and then I, we ran some statistics at that intersection. There hasn't been an abundance of accidents at that intersection, but the ones that are there have been lots of property damage and so, so it's, it's time. Also, the residents that came in yesterday, both of them that came in that talked about that they'd been watching on a lot of cars run that stop sign going east, either turning, don't slow down, they slow down, but they, you know, go through. All the accidents we had this past weekend has to do with probably drivers there. You know, the tanker accident, the other vehicle stopped and then proceeded, you know, so it's, you know, I know we can put up a lot of, you know, stop signs are only as good as if people stop at them, you know, but I do think at this particular intersection that you guys agreed to put the solar, is that, that it's just something we need to do there. I'm going to put an emphasis with my department, you know, to work, work a little heavier on stop signs. Usually at harvest time, I'm going to be honest with you, there's lots of, we have a lot of complaints of running stop signs during harvest. Trucks hauling corn and soybeans don't want to stop, you know, and then have to gear up again, so I'm not going to, I'm not blaming, because that had nothing to do with harvest any of these accidents, but we do have a lot of violations during this time of the year, and we may need to step up a little bit and, and, and work stop sign offenses, you know. It's too bad we got to do this after the fact, after we lose somebody, then that's when we all get excited, you know, so, but. The last thirty days, we've had sixteen car deer accidents, eight injury accidents, fourteen non-injury accidents, and one fatal accident, so my guys have been, we've been busy. So, any questions so far with any of that?
Sheriff, the other intersection I'd like you to take a look at is at four sixty-six and fourteen, you know, Friday evening, there was an accident there as well.
Four sixty-six and where?
Highway fourteen.
Oh, yes, yeah.
If that stop sign merits a, a flashing sign coming from the north going south, I, I can think of a few other instances where it was foggy, and I think that would help. And in certain senses, situations, no, but I think that, that merits a look at, anyway.
Okay.
And that, you'd have to, you might want to talk to state about that, because that's their stop sign.
Yep, yep, yep. Hey, the other thing quickly is that I sent all of you guys this sheriff's management, which is really good. In the past, I've always filled this out, this year, this year I made Dave fill it out. So Dave prepared this one. There's a lot, he, he, he got it the first, this, we do this every two years, and they ask a lot more questions than they did previous years, but this compares us with other departments our size, so you can kind of see comparison, so it's a, if you have a chance sometime, just take a look. I know Dan's already looked at it, because he's commented a couple of areas.
Yeah, I just commend you guys, the thing that stuck out most to me was the processing of arrest warrants. You guys have a very quick turnaround, and there aren't many outstanding arrest warrants that we have here in Brookings County, and that is a stark comparison to many of the other counties that have hundreds, if not thousands, of outstanding arrest warrants. So you guys deserve credit on the, on the processing of that, because it does impact community safety. I mean, if you have a lot of individuals that haven't been arrested, still roaming around, that impacts things. That, I think, as I was scrolling through it, that's, I think, what jumped out most to me, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sheriff, could I get a hard copy of that?
Of this?
Yes.
Yeah, you can have this one.
Okay, sounds good.
If I get out of my chair.
Thanks for your report. Bob from Community Development.
Today, it's going to be windy, windy until at least one P.M., then it should start to die down. Looks like it's going to get pretty cold coming up, and then it's going to get back warm again. Later today, I, I did a staff report, we do have the eighty-second civil support team coming up for a, a meeting today with the emergency managers. We had an exercise over at the Swiftele Center back then, now Dakota Bank Center, where they came up a few years ago, and, so we'll see what, what they've got going on. The, at the, the milk truck incident, I did contact Chairman Jensen, and I bought him a couple pizzas, he was out there so long, and I got quite a, quite a sunburn out there myself. And October twenty ninth, Buffalo Ridge Two is going to have a functional type exercise, it's going to be a high rescue exercise up at the, one of the wind towers, and that's at five P.M. if anybody wants to go to it. And then tonight, Basin Electric's having their safety meeting with all first responders that, that are on the, on the respond circle, so I plan on attending that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Bob?
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. from the weed department.
Oh, pardon?
Mr. from weed department.
I'd like to update you all, the weed and pest department is now at four eighteen Western Avenue, here in Brookings, on the highway shop grounds. Just so the public know is aware that we are no longer in the city county building on second floor. We are at four eighteen Western Avenue. Just want to let you know, back in September, on the twenty-third of September, we had, Ben Wrench and I had gone to a mosquito conference in Aberdeen. A lot of information was presented, and I wouldn't say it was new, it was a really good reminder for mosquitoes and whatnot. And then we also had a tire that had a chunk taken out of it. So Brown County was nice enough to let us drive to their shop and change the tire to the spare. So when I got back, I did replace tires. I'm sure you probably saw that in the last billing cycle. I had to get new tires on my pickup, so. Otherwise, is there any questions for me?
Any questions on the board?
Thanks.
Mr. Beitler, anything from the, yeah, okay. Concludes department head reports. We have finance officer report, it does some be it noted items, auditor's account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, and register of deeds statement of fees collected. We do have a nine o'clock, but we have a little extra time, so move on to item number eight. First reading, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero seven, an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, amending Article Four District requirements, chapter four dash zero seven, transmission pipeline risk reduction overlay district, section four dash zero seven dash zero five dash zero two, planning zone, liquid Action is the first reading only. The second reading will be Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, at nine Next agenda item would be action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-five, a plat of tract one, even addition in the south half of the southeast quarter of section eight, township one ten north, range forty-seven west of the fifth principal meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments?
We heard this on October seventh, regularly scheduled planning zoning meeting, and it was approved by the planning commission and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, call roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approve resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-six, a plat of Martin Farms addition in the southwest quarter of section twenty-six, township one eleven north, range fifty west of the fifth principal meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Comments?
Once again, approved by the planning commission on October seventh unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions? Call roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to the Brookings County for hail damage to an equalization vehicle, receipt number zero zero seven three eight zero six five and zero zero seven four two eight five seven, in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars and forty cents, to GL line one oh one dash four dash one six two dash four two five zero. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Have motion in a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action approve request to fill vacancy for full-time correction, corrections corporal in the detention center. Do I have motion approved?
So, go, second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Action F, action approve request to fill vacancy for full-time male correctional officer in the detention center. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item D, action to approve the transfer of a two thousand and four Chevy Suburban from the commission department to the sheriff's office. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments?
The sheriff's office just has a need for it, and my maintenance staff really wasn't using this vehicle enough, so we're going to transfer it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item H, action approve the following appointments to county board positions. Do we do each one of these separate then?
Yes, as, as they're kind of laid out on the agenda.
Okay. The Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board, four H extension representative to a two-year term. Do I have motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Andy Depreze for a two-year term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number two, Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board Pistol Range Representative, two-year term. Do I have a motion for Arden Segal?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Arden Segal to two-year term. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Number three, Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board, community at large member, two-year term. Do I have a motion for Lindsay Wallman?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Lindsay Wallman to a two-year term. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Number four, Brookings Health System Board to a three-year term. Do I have a motion for Shawna Hanson for a three-year term?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Extension Board, one-year term. Do I have a motion for Susan Vanderwall for one-year term?
There's six of these, so I think you can do all of these together as one motion.
Okay. Extension Board, one-year terms, we have Susan Vanderwall, Ken Lars, Kenneth Larson, Valerie Depreze, Caitlin Brant, Laura Stern, and Tyler Jensen. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number six, under their housing and redevelopment commission to a five-year term. Do I have motion for Ryan Krogman for housing commission?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Krogman for a five-year term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Planning and zoning commission, district one representative for four-year term. Do I have a motion for Kyle Vanderwall?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Planning and zoning commission, district three representative for your term. Do I have a motion for Tim Paulson for a four-year term?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Tim Paulson. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Planning and zoning commission, alternate, three-year term for Justin DeGroot. Do I have a motion for Justin DeGroot?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for Justin DeGroot, three-year term. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. The Wheaton Pass Board, rural representative, a three-year term. Do I have a motion for Tim Bauer?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Tim Bauer for a three-year term to weed department. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Wheaton Pass Board, city representative, a three-year term. We have Randy Meyer for a three-year term. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second for Randy Meyer for a three-year term. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. With that, I'd like to thank all the people that come forward and, and put their name in the hat to be on these boards. Sometimes it's not the best job, but somebody has to do it, and these people are willing to step up and voice their opinion, so. With that, we have commission department director's report.
I will get started and see how far I get here before our nine o'clock. The first thing on, that I have is the general fund surplus was at twenty percent for September. This is a little bit lower than our ten-year average of twenty-five percent, but again, we continue to monitor this and start... we continue to monitor this and start, we, we will look to kind of year end to see if there's any assignments that need to be made. Of course, it will jump up here in October because of the second half property taxes that are due, so. Then the, the next ten county meeting is coming up on Wednesday, November twelfth. It's in Madison, actually Silver Creek events, looks like it's just west of Madison out on Highway thirty-four. I need to know if you plan to attend. I know Commissioner Vanderwall has said he plans to attend, Sean.
I, hopefully I'm done by then.
Okay. Then we received information from Banner Associates. It's this weekend, they're doing their client appreciation tailgate. That information is included with my report as well. Now that kickoff was announced, it's at seven PM, so the tailgate will be starting, I think, yeah, at three o'clock in their, in their tailgate location, kind of north there of the, of the S-Jack, so feel free to attend that. I would like to get a consensus to do, possibly do another supplemental budget resolution. We have one that's coming up here in, in a second, but I may need another one before year end. Can, is that okay if I just get consensus to do that? Okay, I will stop there and do our nine o'clock.
Okay, back to a regular scheduled agenda item, nine o'clock. Public hearing and action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-four, a supplemental budget resolution. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second and now open the public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak to the resolution? Any proponents who like to speak to the resolution? Any opponents who like to speak? Is there any opponents that would like to speak? Okay, entertaining, any comments from the staff?
So this supplements several highway department budget lines, three or four bridge projects and then the last line supplies and materials is for the two hundred and fourteenth street upgrades, so this is money that has been in the highway department, basically their, their fund balance that will pull out and put into budget lines to, for the expenses that we have incurred with these bridges. If you recall at the last meeting, we did a number of automatic supplements and this was the money that the state had paid us for these projects, their portion for these projects, so this is just getting all of the budgets in line to make sure that we're, we're good to go to pay the rest of the bills that we'll experience here for the rest of the year.
Okay, any questions? Any questions on the board? Call roll please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, back to reports.
Oh, let me, really about the only other thing that I have is just some upcoming dates that you see there, next Tuesday, I know it's on your calendars, but we have that special exec session for department head reviews, so we'll start here and, you know, call the meeting to order here at eight-thirty that morning and then we'll be an exec session going department by department over reviews. And then that afternoon at one o'clock, we'll meet out at the highway department and head out about one o'clock and on the highway tour for that afternoon. Otherwise, just kinda coming up, we have the Veterans Day holiday on Tuesday, November eleventh, where offices will be closed. And again, that ten county meeting down in Madison on the twelfth of November and then a little bit further out, Thanksgiving closed Thursday, Friday. The egg, the Chambers Egg Banquet is December second. I think maybe at the next meeting, I'll be kind of asking about who wants to attend that. Sometimes we get a table if we have enough interest among staff and commissioners, so we'll be, I'll be asking about that. And then just some other upcoming holidays. Couple other things to note, I don't have the official invite yet in front of me, but Commissioner Vanderwall said on November second, the Sinai Department, Sinai Fire Department is having their soup feed. We think that's at noon, but I'll get some additional information and, and get that out to you since that is before our next meeting, so when I have that, I will get that out to you. And then on November tenth at noon, it's a, it's either in person at the research park or there's an online Zoom invitation too that I can send out. There's a regional stakeholders meeting, we've been, we've had a couple of meetings with this and they're doing TIF presentation and I know Jacob Remmer, our equalization director, is going to be one of the presenters on that, so again, that's either in person out at the research park or there's a Zoom option as well. Other than that, I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, move on to item number ten, the state's attorney's office. Thank you. Item eleven, Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On Tuesday, October seventh, I met with a local business on a traffic concern in the county and later that evening, I had the zoning meeting here in this building on hobo day, October eleventh, I along with Commissioner Jensen and Stacy, we walked in the hobo day parade. It was a really good crowd and a really good day to, yeah, and even a Jack's Win. On Wednesday, October eighth and, and October fifteen, I attended the Samara Avenue meeting in VOG along with the highway superintendent and Stacy as well. And then on Thursday, October sixteen, at eight-thirty that morning, Commissioner Jensen and I met with others for the East Central nine-one-one quarterly meeting. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Post.
Yes, on October seventh of the evening, I also attended the planning and zoning meeting and then on the eighteenth, just this past Saturday, I attended the Republican meeting out at the Outdoor Adventure Center.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, so on the eighth, ended up attending the merger board meeting. We had the search firm for the CEO, Cohen Taylor, in town. They were here meeting with local businesses and, and that in, in the area, gaining information on kinda what, what the merger committee and what we expect out of a CEO, so they can start that, start that search. And then on the ninth, we actually had the merger board meeting, talking about the different areas, the CEO search, the branding, the branding and, and all of that, trying to get the merger, merge committee organization up and running for January first effective date. And then on the eighteenth, I along also attended that Republican meeting out at the OAC with Commissioner Post was there as well. Some good information about city government was presented, so that is my report.
Thank you. On the eighth, I did attend the conservation district meeting. On the eleventh, in the morning of the hobo day, attended the president's breakfast with Commissioner Vanderwall and then we did walk in the hobo day parade, thanks to the staff and to the sheriff's department for the use of the, the rangers, so. On the sixteenth, had our E-nine-one-one meeting, we got another meeting coming up, we had an item come up that we need to approve, some expansions with the telecommunications with the water department and the city and E-nine-one-one, so. That's all I have to report. Move on to item number twelve, which is executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two, parentheses one, three and six, personnel consulting with legal counsel. Do I have motion to enter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we're in executive session.